We have people do all kinds of crazy things to get customers taken care of. And I know a lady was in the checkout line at Walmart and her debit card wouldn't work one day. And a lady that runs our debit card department got the cash out of her account for, with the customer's permission, of course, and drove that to Walmart and delivered it to the customer. I mean, we just do whatever it takes to get the customer taken care of. And I think that's unique in today's banking environment.
Good afternoon. I'd like to introduce Reverend David Green, who will give the invocation.
Mr. Green. Praise this God and be with us all together here today. Our mayor, city commissioner, city manager, and staff, as well as citizens here all across Amarillo. We thank you for the gift of wise stewardship of our resources, for the gracious time, thoughtfulness, and energy that go into decisions made and actions taken to ensure our health, safety, sustainability, and positive sense of community. Continue to be with and guide and inspire all of us to be and to do better. For today and for the bright future, we all share. To your goodness and your grace we pray. Amen.
Thank you. If you all would join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to a republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
It's now our pleasure to make a special presentation, so we'll come down. I'd like to ask, if I could, Mayor Deborah McCarty to come forward and Commissioner Madison to come on. I was going to say Madison Sims, but I think you all get upset. Gone but not forgotten. Y'all come up in front, please.
Come up here with the camera, bro. All feet continue on the camera.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
I know.
Brian, what is that? You don't have to be selling cars today.
It's also very difficult to gather these folks because they've all gone of very busy lives and have left their life with the city. And we have a special presentation today. Through their efforts, through the efforts of all the commissioners in the last commission, we were able to buy the purchase of water from Mesa, and we were able to rebond that. And because of their efforts in getting a triple-A bond rating, we were able to save the citizens about half a million dollars in interest fees because of those triple-A bond ratings. Now, there's far-reaching effects to what this water will do, but it is part and parcel of a well-run city. And we have said in the past that this purchase could carry us another 200 years beyond what we had in capability with water before that. Obviously, we have to be good stewards of that water, no matter what we have. But we would like to present, as we have to some of the other commissioners, and this special water drop that was a commemoration of that. So it says, "City of Amarillo, Mesa, Primois, Water for the Future Generations, June 2011." So Mayor McCarty, it's our privilege to present this to you.
Thank you so much.
And...
This is a box edition.
Yeah, this is a box edition.
Thank you.
And Madison?
You just leave it in the box.
You're... No, you're not going to break it. It's a photo op. So we appreciate very much your efforts.
Can you speak? All right. All right. First of all, I'll say thank you. I've seen these, and I said, "Oh, my God, this is awesome." But I ran into Mr. Pickens at a funeral about three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, and I went up to him and said, "Thank you so much for working with the City of Amarillo and with Primois on these water efforts." And he... And I'm telling you the truth. He said that he was grateful that we could come to a resolution. He thought it was the right thing to do, and he was so glad that we were able to pull it all together and do the right thing.
Water for the future.
That's what he said. Yes, water saves you. So that's great. That's great news. Thank you so much for this. Appreciate the beauty.
Madison, I want to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, of course, this is commemorative. To me, in the lifetime of a city, there are few marks, benchmarks, there are a few times that you can look back with pride and say, "The right things, the... Thank God." For those that made this decision and had the courage to do this and make this decision, and this was one of those times. It's a great thing for the future of Amarillo. I was certainly proud to be part of it, and I appreciated everybody's efforts. It was a great time.
Exactly.
Proud of your efforts and congratulations.
Thank you. Glad to hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison.
Thank you.
What the mayor didn't know as she was looking at these is we had always wanted to include her. It's just hard to get them back here.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for being here today.
Uh-huh. Like that coat, Commissioner Ead.
Now, before the meeting actually starts, we'd like to recognize the Amarillo Police Department for a notice that was in the paper this morning. The Texas Crime Stoppers Council has selected Corporal Slover from the Amarillo Police Department as the Crime Stop Coordinator of the Year. This is a very important event for our city. We were one of the founding agencies for crime stoppers and has carried across the country, and we're still holding up our end by getting these awards. So while they aren't here today, we wanted to make public recognition of how well our police department does and how they're seen in the scope thing across Texas. So we want you to send your congratulations to the police department and also to Corporal Slover.
Well, of course, the Crime Stoppers has done such a great job, Anthony, in most respects of the reason, and this is a great award for Slover, as well as for Crime Stoppers. And it always makes us look good, whenever the staff and all of our employees give it. So appreciate that.
Okay, so officially, you're welcome to directly schedule meeting in Amarillo City Commission, held on the third floor of City Hall. We call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM on this Tuesday. The first item of business today's agenda is the minutes. Attach the copies of the minutes, and that is for approval of the meeting held on October 25th, 2011. Without a motion.
Mayor, I would move for approval of minutes as presented.
Second? Okay. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of passing the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes with a four-oh vote. Okay, the next item is ordinance number 7301. This is the first reading of an ordinance changing the zoning of Block Nine, Beverly Garden Unit, number two, in Section 158, Block Two, ABNM Survey, Potter County, in the vicinity of Mirror Street and Bernard Avenue, from a residential District One to a residential District One with a specific use permit for placement of a Taipei-manufactured home. This is recommended for approval by a seven-oh vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Are there any questions about that ordinance? Any concerns? You see it presented there? Any comments? Any questions for the staff? Not on the table, take a motion?
Mayor, I would be approved, ordinance number 7301.
Okay, are there any comments from the audience about this?
I second.
Excuse me, I had forgotten to ask if there were comments from the audience. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes with a four-oh vote. Ordinance number 7302. This is the first reading of an ordinance changing the zoning of a 4,000-square tract of land on the southeast corner of Block One... Excuse me, Block One, Block 27, Pocket Place Unit, number 16, in Section 28, Block Nine, BSNF Survey, Randall County, in the vicinity of southwest 34th Avenue and Bell Street, from General Retail District to Plan Development District, where light automotive repair shop is recommended for approval by a six-oh-one extension vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Are there any questions from the commission about this? Do we want to hear any more detail about this presentation? I think there were a couple of questions about it.
I was fixing to say, the discussion we had in the work session was regarding, this is such a move for what goes on in the rest of that shopping center. And there were concerns voiced in the work session regarding primarily cars, parked cars, cars waiting to be repaired, cars that are in need for repair, and a part has to be ordered. So it has to sit somewhere for three, four, five, eight days, whatever it takes to be departed. So I think that when we... That the advocate needs to be aware of restrictions, not... Well, the greatest restriction would be that we would put on this ordinance as we pass it because we had a concern in there. This is not a mechanic shop as we think of one that uses power tools, like the main equipment that does tire work, breaks down tires, removes tires.
Correction, though, it does do brake work, and it will take off tires, wheels. My concern was that, I know in my business, we sometimes get delayed five or six days for a part, sometimes two days, but everyone here has stories about their car being tied up while it was in a repair station. And I want to make it plain that part of this wording in this change will be, "No outdoor storage or display of any kind, and no outdoor overnight parking of vehicles is allowed." We do not want to substantially change that neighborhood at all. And if this is not honored, it would be cited and prosecuted, and we will take special note to be sure that this is followed exactly. So I think it's a concern. We don't want to diminish that neighborhood at all.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we need to add outdoor to "no overnight parking"? Is that less speculation on outdoor storage?
Yes, that's the suggestion.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any other comments from commissioners about this wording? Any comments from the audience? Now, I'll undertake a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I approve the ordinance number 7302, but I do want to clarify that changing wording where it said outdoor storage, "No outdoor storage or display of any kind, and no outdoor, outdoor overnight parking of vehicle is allowed."
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of this ordinance as changed?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes with a four-oh vote. Okay, we have resolution, Potter County Appraisal District Board of Directors. This resolution casts the City of Amarillo's votes for the Potter and Randall County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Comments about this? Mr. City Manager, would you explain, because it was a little bit concerning to us how these votes are distributed? Could you explain again to us how we distribute these votes, what are some of our options are?
Certainly, Mayor. The Amarillo Appraisal District consists of five appointed directors. Those directors will be nominated and ultimately voted upon by the taxing entities. And then a sixth in each case who is by law the appraiser or the tax collector for each of those two counties. The appraisal district's votes are assigned based on the different tax level of each entity that gets to vote. So for example, the Amarillo Independent School District for the Randall County Board has 1,610 votes. The Canyon Independent School District, 1,580. Randall County, 1,075. When we get to Amarillo, the City of Amarillo has 635. In the case of the Randall County portion, there are five open positions, there are five nominees. This body has 635 votes that they may distribute as they see fit. You may apply all of your votes to one. You may split them in two, in three, in four, in five, at the pleasure of this body. As an example, if you split it equally among the five, you would have 127 votes to cast for each. Potter County, very similar. In terms of the number of votes, the City of Amarillo has 610 votes to cast in Potter County. Again, the Amarillo Independent School District's the largest, at 1,860 in the county, almost three times the city, at 1,535. In this case, there are six nominees for the five available positions. If the votes were to be divided equitably amongst five, I think that would be 122. But again, these are your votes, and you may cast them as you see fit.
Okay. Any other concerns by any commissioners about that? Any concerns by the audience? And I'll undertake a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of this resolution allocating our votes as follows. In the case of those nominees from Potter County, we split them equally, one-sixth of our total votes to each of the candidates from Potter County. And then in the case of Randall County, there's five, we give each candidate one-fifth of our votes.
Is there a second? I believe we need to clarify, though, that there are actually six candidates in Potter, and we are designated the first five. Is that correct?
He's saying fifth.
I'm saying equal.
Equally among the six.
On the six.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, and any discussion by the commission? Actually, I guess that we're only able to cast ballots for five.
Perfect.
We could cast for six, but we only get to...
Only five elected.
Only five elected.
Is it again based on the spread of the votes, Mayor?
It's not that.
No effect one way or another.
It's not, because we have little effect on this. We're a small piece of the pie at this time.
It's really if you carry some big stake.
Okay. So it would make the difference of either 122 votes for five people or 102 for six people.
That was a bad.
Hear me?
That was quick, man.
We cheated.
Oh, okay.
But that is correct. I think that's the number. So we'll leave that as it is, I suspect. Any comments from the audience about this vote? Okay. So did we get a second?
Yeah, we got a second.
We got a second? Okay, we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor of this vote?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes with a four-oh vote. Okay, resolutions. Next is appointments of boards and commissions. Appointments are needed for the following boards and commissions: Construction Advisory Board of Appeals, three-year term, the... Excuse me, Courts of Plains Board Representative, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment Board. We have, I think, some people that are going to renew. Do we have a motion for those positions?
Yeah, Mayor, I would make a motion for the Construction Advisory Appeals Board that Kim Black is no longer going to be seeking a term. With our thanks, he will retire, and I would recommend we replace him with Frank Lilberg, Master Plumber. Additionally, Mr. Joe Norman is available for reappointment. Daniel Walton, the architectural representative, is available for reappointment. On the Courts of Plains Board, our previous representative, Buzz David, has said he would be willing to serve a different term, but that is the nominee. And on the Zoning Board of Adjustment, for three-year terms, Larry Mills has said he is available to be reappointed. And Bob Benson, who has served with our thanks, has resigned, and I would recommend that he be replaced with Ms. Farrah Mansfield.
I second.
Okay, do we have appointments named for those positions and seconded? Do we have any discussion about that? Any discussion from the audience? Okay, if not, all those in favor of those appointments as stated?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes with a four-oh vote. Next item is a consent agenda. It's recommended that the following items be approved, and the city manager be authorized to execute all documents necessary for each transaction. The only item we have today is A, dedication and acceptance, water and sewer line easement, drainage easement, utility easement, and right-of-way deed. And with that being the only item, are there any questions about this item? Any concerns, any explanation needed by the commission? If not, I'll undertake a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All those in favor of passing the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes with a four-oh vote. We have now a presentation by the City of Amarillo. The City Manager, I think you have a presentation about our website and customer relations.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'd like Mr. James Brown to come forward today. The city has put together an updated website, and I think as with any website, it's kind of a work in progress, but we've had it up now for a couple of months. We'd like to highlight it today, but most importantly, we want to highlight some of what we call the Customer Relationship Management portal that's on here. Another way for citizens to get information to us about items, the extra things to do, things that we can not only then address, but provide closure and response back. We want to talk a little bit about the access to these meetings that we're sitting in today that are available through the website. And James, a surprise to me, because I don't think we got it up till late Friday, but if you scroll down toward the bottom of this homepage, please?
Yes, if you will.
There we go. The city was again, for the second straight year, awarded the Texas Comptroller's Silver Leadership Award for Financial Transparency, and that's in large part for information that we make available to the public through the website. So with that... Oh, it would be remiss. That is largely the work of Mr. Dean Friga and Ms. Michelle Bonner. Neither of whom, I believe, are here tonight. So they got off, but they certainly have done a phenomenal job for us in that matter. James, if you would, if you could kind of take us quickly through what you have here today, and then we'd stop and answer your questions, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Commissioner, we just wanted briefly to kind of give you an overview of this website. This is a totally new rework of a new...
Can you pull that mic up, please?
Does it...
That's better.
That's better. This is a new design, a new rework. We really endeavored to make this a more interactive website. Our previous websites have been relatively static, without much interaction from the visitors. We normally get... Well, in October, we had 250,000 page views approximately, by about 30,000 separate users. So we're getting a little traffic to it. We want to highlight a few of the services available that we have here. One of the things that we changed here, we want to make information easier to get to. I'm having trouble with this little mouse here, so excuse me a moment. Right in the middle, we said, "How do I section?" Part of this is that it's just sometimes hard to find information. You know, how do I do certain simple things? And you'll see, we put our most common asked questions there. We surveyed our departments, get their top five to 10 questions that they are asking. We come up with a database. Really, there's about 330 answers in there that goes into our Citizen Relationship Management program here. And a big reason for that is we want to make sure we're giving a consistent answer to our citizens. We'll make sure they're able to get it in a timely manner. This is how do I is kind of the first step in that, so they easily get information. Over to the right side, in the Citizen Action Center, you'll see quite a few icons there, and those are quick ways to get to sort of our more popular... One of those, you got courts, people get information on how to take care of tickets, or information on their tickets, our building safety, employment, utility building, whatever, transit. Those are the things that our people who are visiting our website are looking for the most. So that's one of the easiest ways they can get information. The community connection is really the gateway to our CRN application.
Would you still have a CRN for those of you...
It's a... In the business world, it's customer relationship management. We look at it more as a citizen relationship management thing. These are the states that really make it really easy for us to get some information. Again, you can go back to find the answers or ask a question and get into those and find the answers. We have those 300 or so questions out there in a database now that people can answer. Those are growing all the time. If your answer's not there, you can always ask a question. It's online, you fill out some contact information, tell us what your question is, we'll get back to you. Or, you know, you can make a request. One of the things we get the most of is people asking questions, you know, "How do I do certain things?" Or, "Hey, there's a abandoned car in my neighborhood. I'd like to get that taken care of." Or, "There's weeds," or something like that, or "Our neighborhood is a dirtball." You can see all the categories of questions here. In the case of an abandoned vehicle... If I can get this mouse to work here. I'm going to talk to our technical people.
So you're solving the same problems we all have with tech.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
These are reported names, and rock and roll and packing.
So you can say, "An abandoned car."
I have a virtual mouse pad. Would that help you? Would a mouse pad help you?
Absolutely. Okay. So then, thank you. In case of an abandoned car, I want to report this. It's in my neighborhood. There's some quick information you can get out of here. Your contact email, if you'd like us emailing you back. The address for it's added. If you can't find that, you can click on the map. You don't have to know the address for whatever reason. You can find it on the map and click on there, we'll fill it in for you. And you submit that, and it goes internally, that's routed to the correct department, the correct person in the department to handle that request. We typically like to get that back within 24 or 48 hours to respond back to that request. If those don't happen, there are escalations in there, and we'll go to their supervisors or department head, and eventually up to the city manager to get it taken care of. So we take this very seriously. We want to be able to respond to the questions and respond to the requests for services as we can. The escalations are there to help us do that, so we can find... One of the other... If you go into my community, it will actually let you track your request. So if I make a request and there's an abandoned car, I would like to know where that request is at in the stream of the work. So along the way, you see provided a contact address or an email address. They will email you back, okay? This has been assigned to the department. It's in work, or we think it's completed, or you think it's completed. So there's a lot of interaction going back and forth. If you're not getting any interaction, you can go back here and track your request, because they email you back, we'll give you an account number, okay? Track the number, because you can go back and request that. We feel like that's pretty important. Below there is a notify meetings you can sign up for, you can subscribe to different items in the city, whether that's... I think right now, we have in there our press releases. So we have a new press release. You can email us, say, "Hey, there's a new press release. Go look at it." Soon, we'll have HR job openings on there. It may be civic center events that you could subscribe to. One of the other things that we're pretty proud of, I think, will help... You can view these meetings online. You can view them as they're happening. And you can also go back and look at past meetings. So, and we have these meetings during the day. Sometimes a lot of people cannot make it here for whatever reason. This gives them a new participate, or at least know what's going on. If they can't make it during that day, you go back and look at it that evening. You can get the sound of the meeting. You can watch the video of the meeting. So we really think all these things put together makes a good interactive platform for us to have conversation with the community, and the community to have conversation with us. I'd be happy to ask any questions or answer questions.
Kelly, can you have us view the current event in progress? Can you have us... Can you set up that as view of in progress, the current event?
As far as this meeting right now?
Can you turn on the current broadcast here? Now, Brian, after the kid you've taken right in your jacket, she... Yeah, right. It's up north part.
They'll think it's...
There we go.
They'll think it's long.
The good thing about this is, whether you're viewing the current meeting or you're viewing a past meeting, you can go by the agenda. If you're just interested in a single agenda item, it's indexed to that item, so you can click on that without having to watch the whole meeting.
Wave your hands.
My...
There's not a 10-second delay.
Yeah, it's 10-second delay, and watch my...
The 10-second delay.
Yeah, I could tell.
No, you have a 10-second. We're like kids. You're like... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I've been dead for questions. I'm sorry. That's why I anticipated that one time. The good thing about this is...
Very well. We're upstairs. You can do the chicken.
I'm the chicken. We're also still on the cable channel, 95 as well, so there are different avenues, people can take to see the meetings. We feel pretty good about it. We continue to evolve and hopefully add more services and get better.
Big change, and it's a great change.
It did work. We have some very good people downstairs in all over the city that have done great work, great work for this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, let's see, we already noted that we got the Silver Transparency... Okay, that concludes the regularly scheduled agenda for the City Commission meeting today. It's however customary, at this time, you allow citizens of this community with matters pertaining to city policies, programs, and services to speak to the commission, and the floor is now open for that comment. If you would like to make a comment, certainly, come...
If you might like to make a comment, certainly come forward if you have an idea.
My name's Tom Shempf, uh, forty-six fifteen Van Winkle. Three months ago, I started trying to communicate, and sometimes my wife says I have a hard time because I don't listen. And Mr. Sims said one time that y'all listen. I got the apartment association to make suggestions. We made suggestions, you gave me a detailed reporting of how you came to the decision of keeping roofs, roof, uh, roofing contractors. Since that time, and I'm not trying to impress anybody or anything else, I bought two more houses in the city of Amarillo. I put in a new gas line, and I complied with all the city ordinances. And I still haven't put a roof on the house that I asked y'all originally to start with. And we had a snowstorm, thank God for that, and part of it began to sink a little bit worse. I've been down to see Mr. McDonald three times. I feel like I'm interfering if I go into his office because he's a busy man. But I do think maybe sometimes somebody ought to start maybe making a compromise, like Mr. McDonald said, he was willing to compromise. We suggested if we count our liability insurance to protect us for damages caused to people, and I have a million-dollar liability, that doesn't count because I have to have a roper's liability. That costs me seven thousand dollars a year. We made a suggestion that we would be willing to pay for two or three inspections and have the inspectors come inspect roofs, and no comment. So I still feel like I'm still back to square one, and you're saying it's not my personal property. Well, I live in a house that has three bathrooms. I don't know which one's personally mine, but I do know I own it. And I own these houses that I bought, and I come in and I make improvements to them. I bought one from Fannie Mae, God help us, that tiny town, don't ever buy one from the government. But I buy a house and I, I make improvements, and if you don't believe that, call your appraisal district. As soon as I paint it and fix it up, here they go, and they raise the value. Well, this one, I need a roof on, and I refuse to pay a licensed roper three thousand dollars more than it would cost me to put the roof on myself. I don't mind paying a licensed plumber to put in the gas line because I don't know how to hook up gas lines, but I'm not stupid enough enough to figure out how to put a roof on. And I'm asking you one more time, somebody needs to profit, and I know wrong wasn't built in a day, but by God, they made a brick. Please check into this again, because this is getting ridiculous. And when the government starts controlling me how to tell my business of one, and the government starts telling me what color I can put on a roof, and the government's telling me what hood I've got to use, I'm going to tell the government to go to hell.
Tom, you actually have about thirteen seconds left.
I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll refer this to our city manager, but I don't know if you'd like to give a report or like to talk to us next week about it. We'd be glad to give you a report where it is. At this moment, we can have some more detail for you next week. If I could, Vicky? She's still here?
Yeah.
I can't see that part, thank you. But Vicky, would you kind of catch us up a little bit on where Mr. McDonald is, the Construction Advisory Board and, uh, the clarification that we're waiting on from the apartment association?
About a month ago, I think, Mr. McDonald confirmed with apartment owners, and there's still some questions being asked from the Apartment Owners Association. Our Construction Advisory Board has been meeting weekly to discuss the new building codes that are, are being proposed and they're reviewing those, so we can, uh, have an agenda item on any weekly meeting, uh, is what we're doing that quite often now. So we could present any proposal to them. Uh, Mr. McDonald is out of town this week, uh, so when he gets back, we can find out where we are on this, uh, but the last I heard is that we were still waiting for some clarification from the Apartment Owners Association. Uh, so, but we, we can take this to the Construction Advisory Board as soon as we, we get that, and I'll make sure that happens next week.
Tom, I think what I see in the background is it has not been dropped, but there are concerns on both sides of the fence, not just from the city, but also from others on the other side, the roofers and other people that were concerned about this when it was first installed. So I would tell you that we'll get back to you with that. Mr. City Manager, can you kind of update us as we go along? But it has not been dropped, it will not be dropped. Any other comments?
First of all, uh, I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak.
Sure, would you give your name and address at least?
Uh, my name is Joseph Hayes, uh, twelve-thousand Ranch Trail. But I do not want to speak to the mayor or the council.
We are the people you're here to speak to, and so we'd ask you to address us, but we really can't have you address the audience.
Thank you.
This is here for our comments.
Who I would like to speak to, uh, Mr. Hartwell, is Paul Hartwell, a person, an individual, not the mayor.
Well, I'm not sure if I can separate the two, sir, so I don't know if I can accommodate your wishes.
Well, I'm talking about a human being with a conscience.
I think I have a human and a conscious being, and it is included as my job as mayor, so excuse me, but I can't accept your premise, so I don't know that I can tell you that you can proceed with that.
I'm sorry, you just said.
My name is Mayor, and these are commissions, and we're here to receive comments, and as we said, these are comments about city policy programs and services.
I would like to address a person.
If you'd like, I will meet with you afterwards and be happy to meet with you on a personal basis, but we are in City Commission right now. I'm accepting comments as the mayor, and I'm accepting comments, I think these people are accepting comments as commissioners, which we're entrusted to do.
I can see that this, that my clock is ticking, but I'm not.
Certainly is.
So, uh, what I have to say does concern the people of Amarillo. I think there is a growing number of people in this city and around the country that are racked with poverty, okay? It's not just an Amarillo problem, it's a national problem, and we're not disconnected from all of the things and the turmoil that is going on right now around the country. It is my intention to influence all of you, to do something, to influence other people, to reach out to help people, because the poverty and the violence that is being endured by the masses right now, you cannot imagine. You're so disconnected from it, I'm sorry, but my point being is that what we need are for people and leadership to inspire other people who have plenty to give to the have-nots, to reach out to the people in the community who need us the most. Uh, I'm not here to disrespect, I'm here to inspire you guys to do a little more, to help people, okay? We don't need forty-thousand-dollar Christmas trees. We don't need downtown revitalization, we need human revitalization. We need people taking responsibility for each other. We need the leaders to do what we, we have always wanted them to do, which is just be honest and open and endearing to us, and to, uh, make rules which are helpful to us, and all of these, uh, scenarios which we have economic exploitation with licenses and, and, uh, we, we get this money handed down from the state that, uh, we enforce, you know, tax while driving, I, you know, was this, I don't know, was this put through by some lobbyist?
Your time is up, thank you very much. I would like to make a, a comment back if you'd want to accept that, as mayor. Very well. I spent twelve hours this weekend, uh, at the dental clinic, the free dental clinic. Our city supported that to the nth degree, we donated to those services. We are not perfect by any means, but this city is a giving city. It's a city that has a lot of passion, uh, for the people that are in difficulty, and we can show that through our CBDG program and all the things that we direct. We do not have unlimited resources, but we certainly have a plethora of compassion, and we exhibit that in our own lives, and I would say that that is, uh, something that I, I don't have any misgivings about what I do in my life and my conscience, is absolutely comfortable and clear about supporting other people with things like United Way. There are unbelievable effects of things like United Way. For instance, I say to people that United Way is not a charity, it's a community building agency. It's an agency that can be affected, in fact, it affected my life. It's affected probably on either side of anybody in this room, it's affected people on either side of them. We are a giving community, we have a lot of churches that do supportive things. I saw over, and it was estimated, there were eight-hundred volunteers at just that dental clinic for, for the period, and I was not there for the full day, uh, but I will tell you that it was an unbelievable experience for me, something that was very important for me to recognize and see. So I would tell you that I think that our city is very responsive, and we are certainly not perfect, and, uh, so we would obviously take suggestions about other things we could do, as long as they're things that are important and can happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwell.
Sir. Any other comments?
This is Anita, sixteen oh four South Harrison.
How are you today?
I'm fine, a lovely day out. Uh, I'm here to recommend that Commissioner Manny Perez be honored at the War Memorial. He was a veteran, he was a Navy veteran, he served his country, and he served our city and community for twenty-five years. He gave up a lot of his time with his family to represent our city, our community. Manny and I were from different parties, and we disagreed politically, but at the end, we became friends. He came to me and, uh, encouraged me to run for City Commission because he did not feel that the person that was going to run under polls would represent our city, so he asked me to stand up, and so I did. When Manny died, we lost the voice for our city. We might not have always agreed with him, but one thing about Manny, he could not be bought. He stood up for what he believed, and his voice may be silent now, but one thing that Manny has done is he has brought up a lot of people that will come and speak in his place, not just me, there will be more. You had a pastor the other day that called us dandelions. Well, you may be dandelions, and you may be just a weed, but remember, dandelions, they bloom, they flower with a beautiful yellow flower, then they form seed, and they go, and they plant, and then another dandelion comes up. So Manny may be silent now, but I hope I can come and speak in his place against ballpark or anything else, and I think that Manny would have liked to be standing up himself, and I urge others to stand up along with me, because we don't need a forty-thousand-dollar Christmas tree, and I think Manny would stand here and tell you that. There are a lot of other ways to spread Christmas cheer without a forty-thousand-dollar Christmas tree, and I thank you, and I hope that you will take my recommendation and have his, a small plaque or whatever size, a startup site at five dollars or so, but that would be a great way for you to honor Commissioner Perez, because he not only represented Potter County, but when he fought, when he said "my people," he did not mean his family people, he meant the people that he represented in his precincts, plus in his county, but most of all, he loved this city, and he fought for all of us.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your comments. I just wanted to note that the city does not have a worm, or it's actually Potter County that has that, so we probably correct your. Rando camp, excuse me, not Potter, but I'd suggest that that would be a good thing to take to them, to see what they could do.
But I think the commission itself should honor him because he was one of commissioners, maybe not city commissioner, but he represented our city here, and I think his name should be placed someplace for the twenty-five-year service he gave to this city.
Thank you.
I'm Jimmy Presley Hammond, fifteen fourteen South Harrison.
Jimmy, I can just barely hear you, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's bad.
Thank you. Carry the shot.
Okay, excuse me.
Welcome.
Thanks, sir. Uh, my name is Jimmy Presley Hammond, a little bit, uh, fifteen fourteen South Harrison. My friend Manny, uh, he taught me athletics when I was a little kid. He was in Belvedere, he and his brother Alex, they ran around with my uncle Jim Johnson. When I was six, seven, eight years old, they taught me to be armed and box. And, uh, you know, this was back in the fifties, when people was pretty, and people didn't run around, people was Spanish and people was black, but by the way, he ran around with white people, you know, he was, he, people was people to him, and that man had a good heart. And, uh, I, uh, learned a lot from him on politics. He taught me, he said, "When you get up there, you have your facts, you know, that's what y'all want to hear, is facts." Well, one of the facts is y'all done a good job on this dental field, I got three teeth pulled, and then, you know, me and my figures, I figured that, the taxes that started going up in, uh, the year two thousand, that they had, that they want to stay the same, oh, I had to pay for the teeth my own, plus I paid my taxes, but since my taxes are high, that's how I'm going to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Any other comments?
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Lord Harris, sixteen oh four South Harrison, and I told most of you, Manny Perez, I think you need to, if you get influence, to name the bridge away in the overpass for Manny Perez. I think that would be a good, good thing for him. That would be a name that we, we remember forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments? There's a young lady coming up, but you'll be next, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, young lady, that's very nice. Trina Fornier, forty-four twenty-seventh South Hagan. I just had a couple of questions. On like the ordinances that you all, um, read today and voted on, are those things that like, um, we talked about before, how there's like a public, um, comment period of so many days? Is this the kind of things that you would ever be that public comment on?
On those two ordinances, there'll be a second reading next week, so there is ability to comment today, and there will be again next week, and then we'll finalize it.
It goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission first, right?
And it went to Planning and Zoning prior to us.
Right. How was that your meeting?
Past, so there's ability to comment on it. Does it go to Planning and Zoning twice or once? Once, so three chances to comment publicly.
Okay, but I mean, if you wanted to contact the city outside of the meeting.
Oh, absolutely, welcome any comments that you'd like to make on any of these.
I'm just wondering if like on things like this, on like the city website, the, under the public notices, can they, I mean, would it be possible to put things like this on that public notice drawdown menu? Because they're not right now.
They're actually in the agenda, and I may be wrong, isn't that?
Oh, yeah, on the agendas, but I just, I don't know, it would be, to me, it would make it easier access, and people would see it, come on my lead. I don't know, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's possible. We refer that to staff and see if that's.
Are the agendas for Planning and Zoning and all the agendas on the website?
Yes, they, they are, and, uh, I'm just not sure about the mechanics of turning the crossposts and, the, the agenda's the official notice.
Right.
Be that for the commission to planning and zoning, however. So, so those are up there. Those then have to specifically reference the action that the appropriate volume will be considering. If, if at any point there's a, a question of, uh, more information, can I get a copy of something? And so is agenda's post, let, con- contact us, and then we'll be glad to do that, but as far as having some, and I may have misunderstood the request, but having a separate dropdown for proposed agendas, I mean, proposed ordinance of items. dropdown for proposed agendas, I mean, proposed orders, I'm not sure that we could make that work and keep it correct and timely and...
There is, there are public notices of like the Planning and Zoning is going to meet, and then this is their agenda. So that's the public notice, I guess. Okay. That was all.
Okay, thank you. And would the other young lady like to come forward and speak? Okay. Anybody else would like to make a comment? Thank you all very much for being here today, meeting this adjourned.